All right, good evening folks. We're going to stay in this hot room any longer than we need to. Thank you for coming. Welcome to Wausau-Placer Hall. I am the mayor of Timely, Tewa, Prezess. And tonight's topic will be all about our impending sewer project. It's hardly been a decade ago. Susan and I were on board at the time when my predecessor, Brian Cranna, applied for a $85,000 grant to do a feasibility study and transfer the water sewer systems from the village to the Dutchess County Water and Ice Water Authority. That produced some huge reports in 2017. I know many of you have been following us along over the past decade. We did do the water system. We built a new water tower, 6,000 feet of water main. And last December, we actually completely transferred the water system to the water authority. And they've been in the village since 2019, operating and managing our systems through an arrangement with us. Strictly speaking, the village of Timely still owns our sewer plant. But when the new one is there and all the capital improvements are done, we're also going to hand the keys over to them, so to speak. So this is later in the game, a huge, huge project in this village. As you know, we've all heard this. Our water sewer went in in 1938 and helped the Maryland Rose develop. And over many, many decades, the little village did what it could or did what it did. But in time, like all things, they deteriorated. At our moment, we find ourselves with a sewer plant, which is past its useful life, which is with troubling frequency, failing to meet its permit. And we are under an order from New York State to comply with our permit soon. And the way to do that is actually replace the plant. So I'm pleased that tonight we have Jonathan, Vanessa, and Garrett from the Dutchess County Water and Ice Water Authority. And they're going to make a little presentation about what we know, particularly since we all met in March of '23. A lot has happened. You know, we've done CCTV of the collection system. And a little bit of news there. We won $6.6 million from the bipartisan infrastructure grant. And there was one thing we had before, which was all fabulous. And then we opened the bids for the sewer plant. And they were 50% higher, basically, than the estimates. And that earns a lot. However, we're going to do this. We gotta do this, and it's coming very soon. So I'd like to turn it over to Jonathan to start. And after the presentation, we're going to stay here. We told you we would stay as long as you all have questions. So thank you, all of us.
I see a lot of returning faces and some new faces coming out. We're going to talk about this sewer plant, the collection system. We're going to work first by comparing trustees. Oh, mic not loud enough? How's my audio? Let me come out here. Can you still see the screen? Can you hear me now? This is better?
Yes.
I'd like to thank the mayor and also the trustees for inviting us out, as well as the community. I know that we've been partners with you for several years now. We're working to move your water and sewer systems into the future. My name is Jonathan Schurman. I'm the deputy director of the Dutchess County Water and Ice Water Authority. And here with Vanessa Kiplan, who is one of our new project facilitators, who will be talking about the collection system and the work that she's done there and progress forward. Garrett Banks is one of our staffing engineers and project manager for the wastewater treatment plant. He'll speak briefly about some of the wastewater treatment components and talk about bidding. I will then go into the costing of the system and where we stand for the typical financial component. This slide is an overview of where we're going today. And my promise to you is I know this room is very hot, and we're going to try and hit a 20-minute mark. So I'll try to speak quickly and level. Some of the discussion points are related to plants, about the background. Vanessa will talk about the collection system, cover various components of how the water gets into the collection system. Speak about the damage that we found in the collection system and how we propose to evolve that. Garrett will go into the bidding component, go through product estimates. I will get into the resources and some components about the cost. At the end, we will obviously say as long as you want, whether it be asking questions in public here or around the room, if you'd like to load in any of the push boards behalf of the system. And can certainly the dramatic board provide a few other names. So what is the Dutchess County Water and Ice Water Authority? Our organization is a public benefit corporation that was created by the state plus the county specifically to come. What are you talking about there?
Yeller.
All right.
A yeller's true.
I am not a yeller, but I will try. So the public benefit corporation was created to basically fill a niche within the county where we have water sewer systems that are dilapidated, whether it be physically or manually. We step in for municipalities. We work with planning boards, developers, to help move these systems into the future and make sure that the ones that already exist, we're managing them appropriately to appropriately provide proper water and save the district, while supporting new facilities going forward. Our mission statement is to ensure that we are providing enough waterfalls for needs and for the needs of the population. Project E. So as Joel mentioned, your wastewater treatment plant has reached the terminal end of its life capacity. It is in need of immediate replacement. It is subject to imminent failure for physical conditions. It has safety violations and electrical issues. Tanks are ready to collapse. Railings are shot. We've come in and done some minor electrical work and also modified some of the components to make it safer so that we can continue to operate and also allow it to be constructed forward with a facility. The DDC has come forward through this process and identified concerns regarding the discharge of the wastewater treatment plant, the amount of flow that's going to the wastewater treatment plant and the collection system. And they've basically given a order on consent. This is basically a demand that the village act to upgrade the facility in the interest of the discharge issues as well as the amount of flow that comes into it. And tonight, we're going to talk about all those different issues and how we're looking to move that forward. This is not a scenario where we do not have the opportunity not to act. As a community, we need to replace the wastewater treatment plant and replace the collection system. Failure to take these actions in a timely manner or a consent order or schedule is a result of fines as well as harm to the environment and the public. Project F. So a couple of times in March and April and May of 2023, we came out and we talked to you about the two major phases of this improvement. The first is we have a wastewater treatment plant, but it's aging out and needs to be replaced. We've gone through a design evaluation of this facility. We have created documents to then draw a bid and see contractors to come and do the work. We are now at a stage where we are about to engage with field activities. We have wastewater treatment plant. We have covered that in prior meetings extensively. And if there are questions, we're having to go to them. We still have the slides to give back to any questions. Well, brief discussion of the three components. Collection system, we have about 4.7 miles of collection system throughout the world.
You really got to get it up.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, I feel like we dropped back there.
AC and fans. And so.
So I'll just switch over to Vanessa. She has a higher pitch voice.
All right, I'm a yeller, so don't worry. So there are about 25,000 linear feet of collection main throughout the village. Most of it was installed in the '30s and '40s. If it were in perfect shape, it could carry about 875,000 gallons of sewage a day. It's not in perfect shape. There's also one pump station, which is nearby near the St. Sylvia's parking lot. And that carries wastewater from the areas off of Woods Road to the main on Broadway. And the biggest problem with the collection system is inflow and infiltration, which we refer to in the business as INI. And I will go more into that in a future slide. A little more about the collection system. So it is mainly eight- and 10-inch clay pipe. There is cement, concrete, PVC throughout. And the treatment plant was designed to process about 100,000 gallons per day. But in wet weather, we're seeing peak flows of up to a million gallons a day. And that is because of inflow and infiltration through deficiencies in the piping. And these high flows, as everyone has stated, have a serious impact. They cause manhole overflows. They cause sewage spills. The wastewater treatment plant is not able to handle that much water. So it does damage to equipment that is meant to work under that kind of pressure. Things running too long, too hot, too so urged when they're designed to run dry. And that raises operating costs. So not only is it a major source of pollution, it's a health risk, but it also directly raises for bill. And to illustrate the impact of wet weather on sewer flow, I have a couple of these graphs. So here, the sewer flow in thousands of gallons is in rain. The rainfall is in blue, and that 100,000 gallon a day limit is in red. So you can see this is an extended dry weather summer period. There are a couple spikes where it rains, but most of it looking pretty good. And for contrast, this is winter. So the big impact is a little delayed because the big storm was snow. But you can see flow tends to spike with rain because a lot of that stormwater is getting directly into the sewer system. And at first phase, we're trying to figure out how that's happening. Now, what is stormwater? It's exactly what it sounds like. So it's raining or snowmelt. It's anything that doesn't permeate into the soil and become groundwater. So anything that runs off the roof, off pavement surfaces. It's not clean because it does pick up chemicals, dirt, anything that passes along the way. But it's not human waste, and it doesn't need to be treated in the same way that sewage does. So sending it to the sewer plant is ultimately a waste of resources. It keeps us from adequately treating the actual sewage. And we're treating water we don't need. So back to inflow and infiltration, INI again. Inflow is when stormwater is directly entering the sewer system. So in this picture, it's happening through holes in a manhole cover. Infiltration is groundwater coming into the sewer through cracks or breaks in piping undergrowth. A few common sources of inflow and infiltration. So this graphic shows inflow is in black. So that's like a downspout or a sump, or a storm sewer directly connected to the sanitary store. And some infiltration. Here, they show trunks coming in through a crack in the pipe and letting groundwater in that way. Next. This is a little closer up look at some more sources of INI. Poorly fitting manhole cover, cracked manhole casing. And then this also shows those joints between the pipes. This is a big thing in systems with a lot of clay piping. Those joints tend to be really loose and a major source of root entry and water coming in. And a lot of the sources of inflow are actually at the customer level. So they're past where we have actual control. We can't find these and control them quite as easily. A lot of the houses in Timely, maybe all of them, were built before there were laws about these sorts of connections or really any knowledge about this sort of problem. So there's a chance that your home is contributing without you even knowing. So we're hoping that in addition to the fixes that we're making throughout the collection system, that we might inspire you to take a look and see, are your sump pumps connected to the sanitary store? Or can you see where they daylight in your yard? Are your downspouts going in your sump and then to the sanitary store? Or can you see where they daylight in your yard? Just a little food for thought there. Oh, these are some videos about the impact of wet weather on the collection system. So you can just start that first one. Oh, I didn't have that auto started on him. But do just click in the bottom.
Yeah, it's gonna be running.
Well, use your imagination. It's a sewer main that's completely clogged with roots and grease, and it's spraying raw sewage in the woods. The next one is a manhole that's overflowing. Now, it doesn't want to cooperate. It's high. You can mostly see the vibes. And so that's a manhole that's overflowing because of roots and grease clogging the section just past it. And this next one's a little harder to see without the video wanting to cooperate. But this is the rotating, one of the rotating biological contactors at the treatment plant. So this is the actual method that we use to treat the wastewater. This is the biological treatment stage that does all of the heavy lifting. And oh, go back one more for a sec. These two stages here, these two sections should look the same. But those heavy flows come in and almost act like a pressure washer. And they put too much strain on the plastic. And over time, big chunks have been broken off. And so we don't have an entire RBC that are anymore, which further makes it harder to treat wastewater and it causes more violations down the line. So what are we doing about it? The first stage, and that's the stage we're in right now, is evaluation. So we need to see the status of the collection system. We need to know what it looks like throughout. The first step was that digital camera inspection. So you may have seen our camera crews or interacted with them directly coming through and using a remote-controlled closed-circuit camera to run down every section of sewer main and take a video recording that our engineers will use to characterize exactly what deficiencies are present and exactly where they are. And CCTV is basically like the gold standard for this kind of thing because you know exactly what the problem is and you know exactly where it is. Because that shows, it gives you a measurement from the manhole. So you can just follow it out with a measuring tape mark and say, this is exactly where you need to dig up that rain. But there are some shortcomings. We can't go past the actual sewer main. So the next step is going to be smoke testing. And this will let us see any sort of cross connections that if they just look like a regular customer sewer lather, but maybe this is a storm drain that's directly connected to the sewer. That will show when we send. So they'll go over the manhole and use a floer to push a non-toxic, odorless smoke down into the manhole. And that smoke will come up anywhere that there's a place for gas to escape. And anywhere that gas can escape, water can go in. So we'll go during dry weather and they'll look. And if smoke starts coming out of, you can actually want to go to the next one. Yeah, so this is what it'll look like. And that's if there were a break in the sewer main right there and then a path all the way up to the surface. You would see smoke come out on the surface. And here is a picture. This shows what it would look like if there's a couple of defects in the sewer main. So we've got a crack here. We've got that manhole casing here. But everything in their house, all good, all tight. A little bit of smoke coming out of their vent. And that's about it. Here, the damage is a lot more significant. So you have all throughout the collection system, a bunch of cracks, a bunch of breaks here, broken lateral and uncapped cleanout. And even in their home is a broken vent line. And that is letting smoke into that back there. So a little more about smoke testing. It's quick. It'll be just a few days, maybe a couple weeks. I'm not going to schedule it for them. But it'll be pretty quick. And you might see some smoke, but again, it's non-toxic. It's colorless. It's odorless. If you have a severe respiratory condition or a small animal that you're especially worried about, leave windows open, but you know, it wouldn't be, it's not a health risk to you. We can provide safety data sheets to anyone who is concerned. And you may see it in your house if you have like a drained out trap. So we recommend run water to fill all your traps. But other than that, if there's smoke in your home, that represents an opening in the sewer system. And that can also be allowing, like I said, if smoke can exit, then so can sewer gases. So we want to get that fixed as soon as possible. So if you see smoke in your house, certainly give us a call. Back to CCTV. So this is the component that we now have completed. So the engineer's evaluation isn't done, but all of these recordings have been collected. And it kind of gives you some examples of what the damage might be. So sagging, some grease buildup, broken sections, root blockages, grease blockages. And while we're still in the design phase, incidentally, the pipe cleaning that happened before the video could be taken actually has served as a temporary fix for a lot of these issues. So we've actually solved temporarily the problem of overflow during wet weather events. Again, roots grow back. So we do have to go back, seal up all of the spots where they're coming in. But we have a temporary stop in there. That's fine. And so what the engineers will do with our smoke testing reports, with the CCTV reports and the manhole inspections, they will develop a list of construction-ready recommendations for repairs. And there are basically two ways you can go on this. You can do traditional pipe replacement, which is, you know, what you think of when you dig up and remove and replace a section of sewer main. Takes a long time. It costs a lot of money, but it's really effective. And it's the only option when there's been a total loss of structural integrity. So you'll see in the back corner there, I've printed out some pictures you can go look at after of CCTV stills from throughout the village. And you know, when you see that the pipe is no longer like this and it looks more like this, the only option is to dig it up and replace it. But if it's just cracks, if it's just a couple of roots or a little bit of opening in a joint, there's another option, which is called cured-in-place pipeline. That is, it's quick, it's much less expensive, and it's super effective to show. Oh, this is a good one, everybody. Look at that guy. So they take a felt tube, basically, that's a little bit smaller than the existing pipe, coat that in resin, and send it in. It inflates in the pipe and then is cured with a UV light. And it basically builds a new pipe inside of the existing pipe. And that can give you another 50 years of useful life out of the existing infrastructure without having to dig it up. Another aspect that we're going to have to be working on shortly, and we don't have firm information about exactly what we'll wear, but just to let everyone know. So this white line, that's approximate, but there is a sewer main that flows roughly this path that carries over 90% of the flow to the sewer main.
If I could just interject. Yeah, that white line runs basically north-south, parallel to the creek. Well, does it extend north of Broadway or is it all south of Broadway?
It's all south.
All south of Broadway.
Yeah.
Not north. So you'll see on the left there that we're on Dutchess Mahover Street. And then the white line is the sewer main and the greatest to the right. Just so everyone's oriented.
Yep. And it is just woods and it's on steep hill. And the terrain causes problems for access. So we had problems getting CCTV equipment out there. We have problems getting our operators out there to look at it. You know, getting eyes on and good manhole inspections is bare minimum maintenance. And our crews need access to be able to do that. So basically, there are three levels of how much access we'll need. And the first is full of access. So just getting out of those orange bushes that they get just torturous to walk through, that most of the line will probably not need more than that. The second is UTV access, which is to get a wheel vehicle there for emergency repairs, this would be for high-risk sections, something that we need to be able to get a gen to in a clogging emergency because this line is 90% of the plant. This is vital. And the last is truck access. And I believe that there's only one section that definitely will need this sort of access. But again, I can't make any promises right now. I'm not the engineer. But that would be literally to get trucks and excavator equipment there for full replacement, if that's needed. But primarily, it's only getting brush. Oh, and this is my fun little puzzle. This is a picture I took on the Eastman line. It's a small sewer infrastructure game. You can give it away. It's not that hard. But that's one of the variables in that Eastman. So you can kind of see how difficult it might be to find for inspection. This is actually one of the easier to find ones also. And our basic work schedule. Again, nothing's concrete. We don't have contractors for construction or anything yet, but we've done the sewer cleaning and the TV inspection over the spring. Smoke testing is coming. We have a contractor secured for that, EST Associates. But we don't have a current schedule yet. We're looking to do that dry winter, so summer, late summer, August. The evaluation report, which is due under the consent order, will be done in this fall. We plan to have construction-ready designs next fall. And under construction is summer of 2026. That's my.
I don't know what my volume is going to be, but anyway, now continuing with some of the information on the wastewater plant and the pump station. As Jonathan mentioned, that crap part project is much further along. So we're just about ready to start construction. We're going to tell the contractors to go. We have to start in the summer. And we expect that the construction will go for a little bit over two years, probably early fall of this year through, say, late fall of 2026. And this is just a very best plan view. That's the new treatment plant. That's how it's going to look in 2026. And we have details, like we've got the construction drawings here if anybody's interested, let's say after the presentation. We can give you some more, a little bit about the new treatment plant.
Everybody knows where the current sewer plant is, right? Far and south end of Macarthur Street.
Yeah, this is Macarthur Street.
Before you get to the village line on your left. Public Works Drive, same place where TBW garages.
And here, there's the plant. So this is where all the work's going to happen at the plant. Out in front of the plant, on Macarthur Street, we have what we call like a staging area. So this is where the contractors will have trailers. It'll be, the workers will be parking there. They're going to be storing things like equipment or materials. That'll happen here. We expect that'll be occupied for the entire project, two years. And then over on Broadway, across from the church that Vanessa mentioned, that's where the pump station is, something here. Across the street from the church, there's a parking lot. So the work we have will be there. And the back end of the parking lot, we could use for some staging there. And that'll be the full two years. That'll be some subset upon the order of months as opposed to years. Okay, so now this is the background on the bidding process. As Joel mentioned, the last year we came and said, we gave you all the information about the plant, about the pump station, about contracts and everything. We said we'll come back once we have some good prices. So we have the prices now. Unfortunately, there's a contractor environment at this point. It's an extreme imbalance of supply and demand. It's a basic economics. There's been like an infusion of all this money from the federal level. So Congress passed this thing called BIL, Buying Parks and Infrastructure Law. And it really is the largest investment that's ever been made in water infrastructure. $50 billion is going throughout the country towards projects like this wastewater park project. And New York State is certainly taking a big share. Already since 2022, we've got like $1.3 billion that we can hear. So our state, of which, as Joel, you guys applauded earlier, we're getting about $6.7 billion towards this project. So what we did in May, we opened the bids from the bidding contractors. And we have four contractors. So New York State has a big song. So once projects reach a certain dollar amount, you're required to have multiple prime contractors to provide the work. So we have a general contractor, electrical, plumbing, and an HBC contractor. So we received all four of those bids in May. When we add those up, and as Joel already gave you the hint, we were 50% higher than what we kind of expected. we were 50% higher than what we kind of expected based on the engineer's estimate. But when you look at the environment that we're in, there's all this great money out there. There, this work is fairly specialized, especially, as I was saying, the general contractors that do these kinds of projects. And to some extent, the electricians that have worked on these kinds of jobs are limited. And we found plumbing and the HBC, those contractors actually came in a little bit less than New York State. So it really is what it is. But that's supply and demand of the contractors. The bids are the bids. So we have all, we have a little slide here on all the numbers in detail. And we also stand and check some of this. So we consulted with some other agencies and other consultants, design firms, engineering companies, people that we know in the industry. And they're seeing this across the board. So similar projects, similar increases. Things running, say, 35, even up to 85% higher than estimates. Unfortunately, that's the environment that we're in. But we'll see all the numbers in clear. This is the team of people that you'll be seeing. Well, you won't be seeing them so much because most of them, we doubt I have boys working out there. You might see their trucks driving around. You'll see them working on the pump station, say. So these are those four contractors I mentioned. G E P, Agent Schultz, Ormos, SNO, the DJ. Then we have the construction administrator, that's Ty Bond. They're, again, a fairly national original firm that they have an office in Rentland. They did, they also did construction administration on the water project, as Joel was talking about before. So we know them, and they're good for this. The design consultant, that's the firm that designed the project. So they're sticking around because they're still designing things to do even during construction, like for example, answering contractor questions, reviewing contractors' submissions for equipment and so forth. And we're the project manager, DCW, and at least until the end of the project, the village is technically the owner of not only the collection system, the pump station, and the plant. And then once everything's completed, the dust settles and the contractors keep it out, DCW takes the ownership. Joel, he's gonna go through. Oh, he's gotta get closer. He's gotta go through some of these numbers.
I've been thinking about how to make my voice a little louder, and that would need to reposition in the room. Hopefully, this is a little bit more accommodating to your needs. So the slides we have up on the screen is broken up into a table. Down the left side, we have the items that we'll discuss as we go through. The middle column is what we talked about in March of 2023. The right column is the current values that we see through 2024, based on the bids that were opened so far. And down the right side, we have just some revises there, just to tell you, you know, a little bit more about what these assumptions mean and where we're at. So as we start at the top, we have two rows there. We broke out the information to show the wastewater treatment versus the collection system. We didn't have a comparable number from what we had provided back in March of 2023, but we wanted to show you now that we have a hard number for the wastewater treatment plant, which is $20 million, $20.4 million. Collection system right now is gauged at $2.2 million. As we move to the next line, we have, this is the number that's comparable to what we showed you in March. This is the total cost for the projection in 2023 of $13.4 million for both the collection system and wastewater treatment plant. The number to the right is the current number based on the bids that we've received and the contracts that we've executed and our projection for the collection system, which is $22.6 million. As we've discussed, originally, the village had secured a LEAD grant from the state of New York, part of the state revolving fund, and that comes to just under a million dollars. Below that, more recently, the village, in its efforts, we have the Water Authority, has secured a buy parts and infrastructure law grant of $6.7 million. And that helps to defray those increased costs. We'll get to the end and we'll talk about the costs we took. When we subtract out these grants from the total cost of the project, we get a total financed cost of, originally, in March of 2023, we were talking about $12.5 million. Now we're talking about $15 million, so it's $1 million more. We also had a Duchess County grant for generators that runs across both, so it's $5,000 subtracted. It's new net cost financed, deducted of where we were in '23, $12.4 million, and then we're currently in, we're at $15 million. This will all be borrowing for 28 years. The village has hardship financing for this particular project, which is excellent, and it means that you do not have interest. And so when borrowing closes, you won't see another third or half of the cost of the project because of that particular financing package. When we do the next line, this is the annual debt service. So if we take that debt and we divide it by the 28 years, we have a certain amount of money that we need to raise each year through the tax roll for the sewer system to pay for the capital improvement. In 2023, we were talking about $445,000 that need to be raised each year. We do all this math, and we get to where we are. We're at $536,000 that needs to be raised. And then we'll cut down to the bottom part. This is the more interesting part, we're really interested. What we've done is we've shown you the cost in 2023 and 2024, your operating costs and the capital costs for both the water and sewer, and worked our way down to the bottom. And I'm just gonna jump to the bottom, where the important part is, with all the costs that have changed over time, whether it be inflation to the operating costs of the water plant and sewer plant, or to the bidding that we have for the wastewater treatment plant at this point, we see about $100 per year increase in cost over what we described to you in 2023, March. So when we divide that month-to-month, per year, that works out to about $8.33 increase over where we were before. Yes, the project is much more expensive for the wastewater treatment plant because of the specialized nature of these contractors. But thank you very much, the federal government, with the effort from the mayor, trustees, and Water Authority, to really secure this additional funding of grant that helps to defray those costs and bring us to the point where we're talking about year over year, $100 more for everything for water and sewer, for the improvements that we're talking about. One piece that I would say is obviously the collection system is still in transit for its evaluation and design. And we are going to eventually reach a point where we have known costs there. Collection systems are very different in the way they work out in a construction scenario. The design engineer will go through and give us a hit list of, these are the improvements you need to do to preserve the value of the plate to the ground, reduce that influence infiltration that Vanessa was talking about, and do it with the best value. And we'll do as much work as we can there by doing that lining of the pipe, which is the capital cost. We'll still have to do some replacement, which is required, to help align the pipe and fix the defects that are there. But the last piece I would say about the collection system is, unlike the wastewater treatment plant, which has had a specialized, the collection system is more generic. And costs at the moment appear to be not seeing the same well as estimation in the single wastewater treatment. This is where our conversations with our municipal partners, as well as the design engineers who are working on the project. We'll see where we are in a year or two when we get to the actual construction. But my hope is that that will continue for the interest of, oh, they don't have it. You don't have it. But the project will continue, and these are the numbers where we are. The one piece to keep in mind is that the operating cost will continue to change. This is a number that is based on annual budget evaluations. We go out and do public bidding to make sure that we're getting the best services and abilities at the lowest cost and the responsible better. And those numbers will change from time to time. The last two years have seen significant increases for the wastewater treatment plant and the water treatment plant. And those increases are reflected in these numbers. Next slide.
Can I have a little more time on that?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Really go over it super clearly. We'll get bored, but I just wanna be sure people understand a couple of the main mechanics. So you've got your quarterly water and sewer bill, right? That's usage. But as we've seen in the last couple of years, on your town tax bill, town rent tax bill in January, there's a line in there, Tiffly Water District, right? And that's been about $200 or so. So that is cabinet. That is us paying back the EFC, the state. Every household's portion of the borrowed money that we did to do the water tower and do the water beans, right? So eventually, after, this is a question for the Water Authority, when did that sewer assessment start showing up on that tax bill, right? Because the water assessment came a couple of years after the work was happening. So what we're talking about is eventually, in addition to that $200 change, water assessment, you get once a year on your town tax bill, it will be joined by a sewer assessment. And because we are such a small place, despite the good financing, we have zero interest and a $7 million. That number up there is $1,100.
So in 2023, the sewer capital cost was $1,900, sorry, $1,901. The same line now for sewer, for that capital cost that will appear in your tax bill, is $1,108.
So we all need to get ready. And I'm gonna tip ahead of myself, but we're gonna keep looking for more money. But worst-case scenario, currently, we all need to prepare for once a year. On that town tax bill, there's another $1,200 that we're responsible for in order to make these mandated improvements, like in the sewer plant. So how soon do you think, like, is it gonna be in January of 2025, 2026? When does it know when that shows up?
So I don't believe that this year, as in we're planning now for the tax rolls, I don't believe that in 2025, that tax bill will come out in January. It will not have a special control at this point.
It has to do with like short-term financing, doing the work. And then once the work's done, then you roll into long-term financing. And then it's time to start paying back the state who lent us these millions of dollars of zero interest. But we still have to pay them back. That's why it's 28 years, it's kind of like a mortgage, right? 28-year borrowing, everybody share. I just wanted people to understand the difference between the use and the capital and how you get your quarterly bill from the Water Authority that once a year, that other cost actually comes on your town rent tax bill, even though it's for your Tiffly services.
If I could just add a little more value to your question? So to say that there will not be an amount, most likely, on the sewer on the tax bill in January of 2025, there definitely will be on the 2026 January, February tax bill. It is all about the progression of the work for the wastewater treatment plant and the stage that we're at. This project will very quickly require us to do removal of existing materials, which are quite an expensive part of the project, and then build monolithic new components at the wastewater treatment plant. So very quickly, we're gonna be getting into the meat of the project and the $1 million as we look at all the time. So I would say January or February of 2026.
Your question, is that based, is there a house that's in it? It's a house where it's based on some of the, uh?
Right, so the municipal mine of Tiffly is a little different than the water district, which is a little different than the sewer district. So that's why it's broken out. Clay Hill doesn't have sewer. Friendship Street doesn't have sewer. We have a couple of water customers who are actually outside the municipal line, right? You know something? So, yeah, so that's why they're separated. Because different people in different areas have, it's like, some go on water, etc.
And to add value, where Joel's describing there, the typical single-family homeowners, what we're describing here on the sheet and the numbers that we're describing. And whether they're within the village or outside, if they're a part of the sewer district or the water district, the amounts will be the same for that capital. Where expenses are based on flow or operating costs, they may be different. But we base this here on 111 gallons per day, which is pretty typical costing of structures.
So I just wanted to make sure I haven't screwed things up for your presentation by starting a Q and A prematurely. I don't know if you have a couple of slides in mind?
Yeah, I think we have a couple more slides if we could scroll through those.
If we could come back to each slide.
All your questions will be asked.
I saw so many hints go up.
Yep. And Joel mentioned that we're looking for additional financing. And this month, we are working on an application for a WQIP grant, which is a what are called an improvement project grant. It's due by July 31st, and Vanessa is heading it up. And we're working with the village to make sure we have all the paperwork ready and can be submitted. We're working with other partners to see if there's additional planning out there. We'll continue to guide the life of the project. And as improvements are needed over the next 10, 20, or 25 years, we'll follow a similar process. Although I would say that the improvements that we're doing here for the wastewater treatment plant are significant for the collection system and will be in place for 50 years for where we do the work. And the wastewater treatment plant is a critical plant. And we'll probably go beyond that because of the type of infrastructure that we're dealing with. It's an investment in the community. Do you want to carry forward or?
I should just go over this one. So there are some things at the plant, you know, we, from the start of the design, we were looking at where we could see them. So we are reusing some things. So there's a few, some concrete tanks at the plant that were salvageable. So one of them we're converting over to new sludge holding. And then one of them we're reusing as an iteration. I think that's the last bit of process before the water goes into the creek. And then the building that's there now is gonna be refurbished and reused. Also, we know that the general contractor has already agreed and expressed willingness to talk to us about what we call value engineering. So they're very experienced with projects like this pipe. So they might have some cost-saving ideas. And they might be willing to, I don't know, it might be a change order to the contract, not an increase, but potentially a decrease. So we're gonna be talking with the designer and the contractor about any possibilities there. Even talking about the design bit, it might be more like their construction methods and their staging, how do they do this job? There might be some savings opportunities there. And this last bit, necessary, to talk in depth about the advantage of the pipelining versus replacement. This is our last slide.
Great, so at this point, we've talked quite a bit. I know it's warm in here and there's a lot of questions. We'd like to answer them all. Anything we can answer, we will come back to you later. So if we could, let's see, ma'am, you've asked a question, you want to?
Yeah, so the amount that's on your 2026 tax bill, that's $1,028. Then there's a number down at the bottom, that's an additional cost that you get on your monthly bill for sewer?
Sure, so there's two ways that we fully fund the water system and the sewer. The first is, if there's capital improvements, we have this annual debt service we need to collect. We do that for all the properties that are in the sewer district or the water district, and that is portioned out onto the tax bill. And so that piece goes there. You still have an operating cost. The plant needs to receive the fluid. You have to receive public water you're gonna drink. So we have to operate that plant. And so the regular bill you get four times per year, that bill we send to you directly that's not on a tax bill, that pays for that operating cost. So this is, what does this cover? Insurance, operator time, chemicals, electricity, anything that goes into actually running that particular plant?
So that's like $2,000 or something.
So this, this number right here, this is just these two added together to let you know, per year, how much you can pay for it.
Okay.
Not an extra cost, that's just the total.
I get billed from you guys in Red Hook, where they just did a sewer project. So there's the regular amount that you're billed for your water and sewer usage. Then there's a capital expenditure or whatever amount of $358 that we're adding on to my use.
What, water system or sewer system?
Village of Red.
Here.
Village of Red. Village of Red. I have another building, I have a building here, a building in Red. So I'm getting whacked for like $400 a year. And that's, that's capital improvement, and I'm paying, getting it on my tax bill?
So I think when it comes to the other property, happy to talk to you afterwards. We can look it up and make sure that it's one that we actually own and operate, because there's some things.
Oh, you do, I have to.
Okay, great, well, then we can look at that afterwards, yeah. And we can focus on Tiffly right now, that'd be good. But just to say, if it is our system, then we do put an amount on the tax bill for capital improvements, and then we send the regular bill for those operating costs. Happy to look at the, uh, sorry.
On the $1,028, as new houses come into this area and they build, should we expect that to go down a little bit as you're having another person add it into covering this bill? I mean, it might not be a whole lot of houses, but you want something, an extra 40, 50 bucks a year going back into our pocket, taking away about the dinner. I was wondering, I mean, we shouldn't have to keep on, new houses that commit, we shouldn't have to keep on paying for, I wanna make sure they're gonna be charged.
Sure, so a little background on the way the capital costs work. We use a benefit unit methodology to apportion the costs. So what that means is.
How's this?
So we use a benefit unit model to apportion the costs. So you go home, you get a certain number of units. So you go home, you get, uh, a certain number of units, and every other single family in the district will see the same. Businesses pay based on what they flow, for the water side, for the sewer side, I think it's the same, I forgot, yeah, but it is the same. So, uh, there are certain components we'll call them now, uh, there are also vacant properties that pay assessments, they pay upon the potential to use the water or the sewer if they're in the district. If they are developed, as you described, their units would reflect that developer status and would increase, and then, this is a giant pie, if you will, and as we slice it differently, if we add more users and more units, it does degrade the cost and make your costs lower. And, uh, those are, uh, there's a certain number of vacant properties in the district that will see that over time. And as the water and sewers develop, I think that the properties change, and they're going to be nonchalant, so they will be real issue.
And I'm quite big, did you keep up running that tubing through? What, and how long has that been around? Has it really been tested until you go to the last 50 years? Might be, it's only been, no, we've been doing it for 10 years, we don't know if it's plastic or not.
Absolutely, uh, I've done a couple of projects using this technology in the area, Greenfield is one, where, uh, we use the lining technology, and that one is steam curing of the, the pipe they're running, uh, but it is in place for, on this epoxy, this is technology that's been used since the 80s, uh, and beyond, so, tried, true, effective, and, uh, and very good. And it's especially good for areas where you may have, say, asbestos piping. Somebody in the, in the right mind, back in the 50s and 70s, said, hey, we've got all this extra material around here, and for what asbestos is, it's not good for your lungs. Moving that from the ground to the bow, we can use the lining, uh, to actually intune that, that pipe in place and move that into the future. The regulators prefer that we maintain that to it, and so anywhere that is in the system, this is an excellent way to preserve, and it, it really is the least expensive way to preserve or exist in the collection system and avoid all this cost for having direct relief. So it is very good for collection. That's your question.
I have a couple of questions. Um, the first one, so, the, uh, the cost, as it stands right now, we're looking at a $1,088 dollar increase in our taxes every year, starting in like 2026.
Correct.
Everything else we already pay, so it's not like more, so, I don't know, dollars a month? Okay. Um, on the topic of the mining inside of the pipes, I know it's 50 years from now, but what happens in 50 years? I have children, and there's gonna be residents here. So in 50 years, what, what is that, like, how do, what happens when that lifetime ends? Can they just do that again? What would be the next?
Sure, um, so we're, we're, we're talking about speculating on future technologies, but my expectation will be you align it again.
Okay.
And that will be fully appropriate. It's a matter of getting a good mechanical, chemical fusion between the two pipes, uh, and making sure that you have the ends are correct. Uh, this technology can be used all over the Northeast, in the US, and foreign countries. I've used it locally, and it does work very well. It, it is dramatic in the amount of production of roots coming in that degrade your pipes, it addresses that inflammation penetration, that's significant. When we look out 50 years, uh, I don't know what technologies will be there at that time.
But with, but with that, it's not likely a one and done, you can only use it once, and then you're done, it's the central idea.
So the speculation is that 50 years is what we can say, but many engineers are saying that, no, you see this long afterwards, if you look at the way plastics, they are in the environment, they are resistant, and where they break down is because they have UV issues. So UV is exposed to the sun, and these are buried underground, they're gonna corrode the environment with hydrogen sulfide, but they seem to be well-designed and have that environment and the technology to take to, to the best of them.
Okay.
And if, and if it needs to be replaced in 50 years, they may have a different technology, they may be able to, directional warning may improve to a point where it's much better, robots are able to pull them to like out when you need them. I don't know what they can do, but for the moment, this is the next solution for the best value.
Okay. Um, and then to the smoke test, so as we probably know, Tivoli is not, well, I want to say, a lot of the residents don't read emails or show up to things or know things. How will they, how will residents be informed that they should be looking out for smoke in their home? And what if they're not home?
Yeah, so...
Finish your question.
I just imagine, well, one, you're gonna have a problem and not know about it, two, people are gonna find smoke in their home and be calling emergency services, like, I just see chaos happen.
Yeah, so our number one point of contact is emergency services, and our operator particularly is actually for the fire department, and so that communication building there. Our contractor is in charge of, and it is their job to do this communication, they have door hangers, they do door humping, um, we're coming out and doing this, and, uh, we'll try to get email access to reach as many people as we can, but, um, I'll work with them because they have a lot of experience in getting word out about smoke testing, they do it all the time, so I will, uh, see what they recommend and work with them, there may be posters, there may be more than just warningers, but mailing may be problem mailers, yeah.
If I may ask you, um, having done this project, I'll be working with Vanessa as we go forward, uh, we will utilize both the water authority's, um, website, we use Duchess Delivery, which is a definitely where if you've signed up for it, we send you an email looking at this on our website. We'll also work closely with the mayor to post on their website with the village, and that way we can use all the best communications that we have to give us out, the most effective code is what Vanessa described, where we leave through our contractor, door hangers, and every house that we impact gets one of those, and, and they fall off, but we, we do work with them, and there's a plan for that, and this is the number of calls.
And would somebody be required to be home, like, you know, when you have like a utility place coming, you have to be home between these hours, like, this is gonna be done during the day when most people are gonna be at work, and then how many would be home to be able to sell you?
Yeah, and it will, it, that will limit the results somewhat, but also, most of the things that are in your house will probably have, uh, check out, like, this one probably won't come out, but if there is, that, okay, then, is, that's not exactly what we're looking for, for smoke coming out in the road, to have a small break, or, or, that's not...
It's an added benefit to attend by for a homeowner, the wax ring number of toilet that is cracked, and that's usually where you see it, so, if your toilet's a little wobbly, might be time to lift it off, put a new wax ring in. The other one is, as Vanessa showed in her video, there's, uh, a stack that goes up through your roof, sometimes those get broken or they sag and break, uh, that can be worse than the immediate. But this is a non-toxic, non-staining, uh, product, and we call it smoke, but it's really a very white aerosol that we've got in the classification.
And I, I just wanted to add to the communication tools, everyone who made it here tonight, you're the experts now. I know things get around this village pretty fast, true or false, so, you know, of course it's a big, uh, you know, at the post office, help us out and make sure that people are aware of what's coming. I'm so anxious about those people, no matter how much you try, one day they're like, what was this? You know, so, talk it up with your friends, neighbors, definitely. And, and also, I just wanna say that everything that's being shared tonight, thank you, Pando, for being here, supporting the product, the video, uh, the slideshow, and, and, you know, sort of narrative of the information, that will be on the website available, so that everyone has all the opportunities in the world to understand what they're talking about.
I just have a question regarding, um, the, uh, operating costs. I know that a lot of people have been, uh, especially concerned when the first quarter comes and the second quarter hits you with like the, the higher rate, and everybody's like, oh my gosh. Those higher rates are because we're like, kind of, you know, in a bad state down there, and so cause more, more usage, more operating costs. Can residents who have the sewer bills now expect the increases like they're getting now, or will that sort of taper off, because we'll have a new system that will be able to accommodate versus we're, we're working, the workforce like so hard now? I know that's like a concern of a lot of people, um, that, that the operating cost will raise significantly, as you mentioned, um, past, I think, two years has been quite significant, um, on both sides, what are your answers?
Sure, both states of them generically, I mean, I'll take what I want, uh, when we talk about, here. Uh, so, the last two years, we've all observed that inflation has significantly increased, we've seen, uh, 6.9 for the CPI of the last two years for an increase, uh, for general consumer goods. When it comes to wastewater and water, we've seen dramatic changes in the expenses that we have to run in systems, uh, primarily, um, uh, electric costs have gone up by 20% and we, the CPI of 6.9, that is very significant. Uh, it is not as shocking as chemicals, we, we need multiple chemicals in wastewater treatment plants to, um, disinfect, to, uh, regulate, to do certain processes through the facility. We've seen expenses increase almost 80% for our chemicals that we purchase, and we go through a full bidding process. When we speak with our municipality, uh, partners that are around us, they are seeing similar increases over the last two years. And, um, lastly, the water authority went through a dynamic, dynamic shift in the last year, where we transitioned from contract operators to staff operators. Uh, we were having difficulty sourcing contractors at all, who would come and work in the smaller facilities that we operate. Uh, it's, if you can imagine a large facility for the city of Poughkeepsie, if you're a contractor, you can look at that and say, wow, a lot of customers, a lot of money, I can make a good profit there. For the facilities that the water authority operates, which includes Tivoli, water, and sewer, the way it's smaller, it's harder to, uh, draw in those contractors, because we're unable to get in. Uh, we also found that the contractors were having difficulty hiring operators in the first place, so these are licensed individuals that work for many years in facilities capable of operating them. So in the last year, what we've done is we've gone through a hiring growth phase, where we've purchased vehicles, hired staff, and started training them up and grow our own team. We think this is actually the best approach, and given us the most reliable product, and we look back at what we were getting from the contractors over the last 20 years, and the systems where they were operating, it was very difficult to get them to actually complete the product. Uh, they were focused on, okay, it's a smaller facility, yep, a responsibly-run system would have eight systems with one operator, and they would run them, and they're done for the day. No, contract operators often will work out from a perspective of, I think if that operator just go to 10 or 15 systems, and then they're not doing all the other labor that goes with it. So with having our own contract, our own labor force, our own staff, that we've trained, we have direct control, we're able to get them to do the work, owners, maintain the facilities, keep the equipment in good condition, and give us a longer part of maintaining these facilities through time. And so, that was also an increase in the cost that we have to make for water and sewer, uh, but we're starting to see benefits from that in the last six months of those operators moving through that training phase and following on with the senior operators. So, to say, where are we now, and what does this mean? So that gives you kind of a window on to the expenses that we're experiencing in the water and sewer industry that have been considerably. Um, annually, we go through a process to, uh, bid out the services and goods that, that make up the operating cost. We're just starting that now for 2025. We will go through a process and communicate with you, the public, customers, uh, through our website, using, uh, letters and using our Duchess Delivery system, so we post a letter up there that says, this is the budget process, it's coming, these are the dates when we'll have public hearings, so you communicate with us. When we do post our new rates that are proposed or tentative, we will also provide another letter that says, okay, now we're at that next stage, these are posted, they're built on our website, if you look at them, if you're ready, if you give us your comments, uh, we can then share with you the, the budgets that show how those expenses are directly related to the rights on the water through it. So, your final question was, what is the 2025, I don't know, but we're working through that now. We are seeing that the economy is cooling a little bit, inflation seems to be down, uh, I think that many of the manufacturers, the suppliers, and the, the different services and goods that we use for the water and sewer plants have hopefully stabilized. I don't know that for sure, but I do see changes in the market for those, uh, certain areas, so I'm hopeful that we're gonna see this. But it's gonna be a conversation, and we'll be back to talk to you about that as far as we're through it. So it's an annual process, uh, look for messaging on our website in October and November, public hearings in November, and, uh, a process where we go through, hear those comments and adopt to the center. So I don't know if the future will, but my hope is that it will continue, not continue, we will stabilize.
If I could add just a little bit to that, um, it is not going to stabilize year one, this entirely new, new plant is going to take adjustment for operators, for employees, staff, I, I'll do with that. Um, the new plant is going to use more electricity, but a lot less chemicals, so we don't fully need to know yet, but right now, we're using like $25 a day in the vital to be our phosphorus removal plants. We're using probably more than that in chlorine to need our disinfection holes, and then on top of that, we're using, uh, a dechlorination product of sodium sulfide, sodium bisulfide, to remove the chlorine, because we have a limit of having no chlorine in our open, you know, that's what we're using for disinfection. The new plant, uh, will do phosphorus removal biologically, geotistically, we don't know, we may still need vital in the future, so that, or the operating cost is a question for it, and it'll have ultra vital disinfection. It's gonna be up and down of chlorine and decor, but now here we're up and down of your life.
I would add, just to go along on Vanessa's thread, and then we'll be back to you, uh, when we talk about, we don't know how the plant's going to operate, it's been designed to meet the permanent standard that we see, the regulatory agencies will look forward, and so, but this is a biological being that we are constructing, and then we're gonna seed it from you, you're gonna send us material, and that will grow in the tanks and do the treatment over time. It will tell us how it's going to operate, and we have built, individually designed the necessary tools to then affect that. So it's the mix of what you send us that will dictate how the plant operates, and we can use the training that we have, as well as the tools, to ensure that we get a proper discharge, and we will be focused on making sure that that is cost-effective.
I'm sorry, I have another question. Um, is all 4.8 miles that is included in this bid, or is it just the white line running along the creek?
So, uh, as I was speaking to the...
Yeah, so we are, so we've done an investigation of the full system, uh, that white line there is just to show where we need to come onto, uh, our easements through private property to, uh, do brush clearing and possibly train them home. But, yes, we did CCTV of the entire system, we'll be doing smoke testing of the entire system, and we will do, we'll be doing repairs where they're recommended by the engineer, uh, the best value around the entire system.
So a little bit more on that, I was describing before, there's a hit list, and they want us to do the most removable line I have to run in the situation, so we're gonna be focused on that piece. We're also looking at stabilizing the use of the pipe that's there. There may actually be good sections of pipe that were put in over the last couple decades, certain portions of the community, so that will be, uh, maintained as, if it's possible. Uh, the duality of what we, I'm unsure of what's going to be required here, is how much of the collection system needs to be repaired from digging at a higher cost, so that allow us to line, the best value is lining, we want to get to do as much of that as we can. We've included an appropriate amount of dollars here, based on our estimate, to do a considerable amount of good, and our hope is to, uh, ensure that we have a collection system that will last for a long time.
So, Robbins in front, and Ken if you want, you have a question next, we have Robbins and Ken.
You first.
You first, it hurts me.
My question is just a clarification, what I'm hearing is it's a capital expenditure for the, for $1,200 a year, let's say, that's fixed, or is it, can it go up?
There will be changes, but it's a set.
I don't know, so if you want to...
No, sorry. So that capital cost for both the wastewater treatment plant and the wastewater treatment plant are fixed for the work that we do for that moment in time, and that debt will continue forward. The piece that changes is, as more properties develop, more usage occurs in the system, think of that annual debt as a pie, as there are more slices for more properties, it will help to reduce your cost. Though, you do ask a good question in that, when we think about, are we done? No, um, we may not. The wastewater treatment plant, yes, it's done, it's a 30-year plant, there may be, uh, some components that need to be adjusted over time, but the, the, that large capital cost is done. The collection system, if we can do it all, you're done, except for any breaks that may occur through time, sometimes there's, uh, if we have cold weather, it may cause pipe to break, we need repair that, that, that might be, there are sections that need to be done. But for the most part, the wastewater treatment plant, I think will be, be a very good staple in a way, this, and capital costs will cease for a long time. The water side, this is just a TSA, they said, we've done a considerable amount of good in your community with the wastewater treatment plant, working with the village, where we installed a new water tower, one of those subjects from the failure, and it needed to be replaced. Several large sections of water main have been replaced, uh, where considerable breaks were occurring at frequent basis, and it can be very expensive to do little repairs along the way, it's often better to do the major improvement replacement type. When we think about your water system, there's still a sense of amount of pipe that has not been replaced and is original, and it may be cast iron, it may be other materials, and over time, we're going to be watching to see where those breaks are occurring regularly through the community, and then plan additional pipe replacements for the water system. So that will cause the water system capital costs to go up over time. It is just a part of understanding the water system and infrastructure.
So what I'm hearing is that $1,200, you can take, it's not what I'm hearing... I mean, I don't mind, just tell me, so we know that's always the...
There could be capital improvements over time that are required. Right now, this is what we're looking at for the wastewater treatment plant, it's very much forward-looking for wastewater treatment plants, a 30-year plant plus the collection system, we're looking to do improvements that will be there for 15 years, we'll do repairs and replacements. The water treatment plant, it is in good condition, but time wells do fail and they'll need to be replaced, and the distribution system of the water system will need to be updated through time because there is existing pipe.
So what are you saying, those are capital costs, or are those things, well, the failure of the cost which are going to be filled out and improved?
So there's two different ways to approach it. One would be saying that we increase rates on the operating side so that we can create what's called fund balance, and we're setting aside money for doing capital improvement. What does that do? It allows the system to be in a position where you're not borrowing money to do an improvement, but it is very difficult to have the current customer say, I want to do that improvement in the future, I want everybody to pay for it now. So typically, what we do is we look to get grants and low-interest loans, if they're going to be low interest, and we're able to do improvements when we need to. And so that's probably a better way to do it. At some point, there will be improvements to the water treatment plant, because our water distribution system, and so that will roll up at times. So this is our best projection right now, which is at some point, more distribution will be...
I think, if I can just ask, because in the area it went up by, so it goes across from 15% to 70%, is that like, you know, in a...
Is it the operating cost?
Well, no, the capital.
Is that, is that 1,180, like, is, can, is it possible that in six months, you're going to come back and say, this cost went up by $6 million?
No, right now, that's pretty locked in.
Yeah, this was done off of estimates with no firm numbers. We now have firm numbers, we have contracts with the construction contractors, and those numbers, if they're going to go up, that's a change order, that would require for approval, it shouldn't happen, but, but not, not the same.
A major capital improvement of doing pipeline within the distribution system or water system would be an activity that you would be aware of, and it's years away. So we have no plans right now to do that work, but just know that you do have some good pipes in your water distribution system. These numbers are for the capital improvement. The water side is done, that work is done, that shouldn't change unless there are changes through customer base, which we will, the boost cost. The wastewater side is predominant cost here for wastewater treatment plant, and those bids are nil, so that's not a shift around the collection system, although we don't have bids for doing the construction there. We do have estimates, and we're going to do as much good as we can, but we're going to stay within the number that we have. So that number is locked in. Operating costs, they will change with that annual bid that we described, as we are a public entity, going into, you know, blocking those costs, updating.
Did you say we expected the plant to last 30 years?
30 plus. Yeah, there, concrete is a legacy, and so right now, we're going to install several tanks that are concrete, and they're going to carry forward. These are going to be monolithic installations that are deep, that plant will be there for a considerable amount of time. There, and the reason why I say that is, there are existing concrete tanks in the Tivoli sewer system that we're reusing, and we're able to move those forward. And I think there's a slide up there that we talked about briefly where we said, this concrete was already put in the ground, we can modify how it's used and carry that forward. So, you know, when I say 30 years, keep in mind, that doesn't necessarily fit all the components. There are steel components over the top, electrical, over time, those things will wear out, pumps need to be replaced typically on like a six or six-year or 10-year, but that's part of the operating. No, no, I think it'll be an improvement over the top, it'll be infrastructure, maybe in 30 years, we'll have a different control system that makes it more efficient. Yeah, so the plant, the plant should see itself carried forward from there.
Sorry, Gail, I skipped Gail, Gail Johnson.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Gail, you actually had a minute a while ago.
That's my fault, I'm never done.
It's not too small, but you know, what I'm confused about, but the contractors who have given the job, are they local? Are they within New York City?
Yes.
He said yes to that.
Yeah, so the general contractors, the Austin Spawns, you know, contractors, different hospitality, um, HAC contractor, I think it's Norwood, or...
And did we get more than what we gave from other contractors?
Yeah.
Yeah, you know what? What I can do is, I can show you all the news we received, because I have, I have their location on there.
You may have it, I may not have it in my personal, you know, I mean, but, no, we can just...
What was your question, Ross, and we'll answer that one.
My second question is, I'm very confused on this one. But, um, we are in the building, but we're only, we don't have one, so we don't have to, you know, so, on that town bill, will it accept a lower amount for us, or will it be a lower amount?
If you're not in the sewer zone of assessment, you will not receive a tax bill for sewer.
Got it.
I've been looking at that afterwards, if you want, the, the, if the program that kind of has, we can go and look at that.
So can you go back to your question, the contractors, the Boston Spawns, the general contractor, that's, they're really going to be running this project, so they're really in charge of holding, and they'll be driving the schedule, and the other contractors are going to be there to support them, who are kind of around them. Farmers Brewster, that's where they're from, the electrician, Pleasant Valley, that's the plumber, and then Marlborough is for the HAC contractors.
So that's, we got three general contractor bids?
These are all bids.
Five electrical, one P, and three H.
Three H, so, and the P, I think I mentioned it earlier, P and H actually paid a little bit less than the insurance, so we, so the G and E, I don't think they're resonating on that.
Are they really doing that, the ones, what's the spot? I mean, they're an hour and a half away, I think, that's, you're taking two minutes, that they're still over $2 million to keep them on those?
It's interesting, it's their bid, they, that's what they, they, that's how they think they can run this job, and they think they can make a profit.
Yeah, 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 for rail and wage, ourselves, so. Their only contractors paid K for bills, huh?
Okay, rail and wage, right, yeah.
So... Okay, I just wanted, uh, return ourselves to where Johnson's meeting occasionally, I have a topic.
So one, one thing, is this, the previous slideshow that I'm going to be available on your website, or the Village's website?
I'm going to say it's the county, it's the door, yeah, it's the Village website.
And second question, is the sun pump issue, is that a concern, a tendency or ability to address that, and how would that, how would that happen?
Sure, I'm going to set the stage, and then I'll let Vanessa go into more detail. We're going to coordinate with the village, but the, sun pumps are always an issue with sewer systems. Basically, homes have sun pumps, and if they're discharging into the sewer system, that impacts, we talked about all the issues there. Typically, what we do here is we'll do a survey of the homeowners, sending out information, asking them to tell us if they have sun pumps, so we can help them to redirect that flow. At some point, we may go to an inspection process where we're reaching out to property owners to understand, you know, what they have and how we can, you know, fix what's going on there. And then there's also approaches where we work with the village to partner with them on their stormwater system, because part of it is, if you've got water in your basement, and you've got a sun pump, and you pump it out into the ground, it comes right back in, how do you make that go away? Part of that is to say, the village is working on an analysis of their stormwater system and trying to make that work, that we don't need to treat it, the sewer treatment plant, but it's basically clean water, but storm water, make it go away through the village system, so.
We definitely, anyone who is pumping their sun pump into the collection system for the sewer disconnects, but also, the board has been working hard for a couple of years, well, we got to give you a place to put that instead, and so, you know, we're doing stormwater studies and looking at the village that way. I wanted to, because some people were leaving, and I wanted to paint a picture, correct me if I get it wrong, but in August, at the south end of Montgomery Street, as you're exiting the village, right across from David Gate, on the left, that meadow is going to be the staging area for the sewer project. And so there's going to be two years of trucks and equipment and activity right at our south entrance to the village. We're working very hard to make sure all those trucks go in and out of Kid Lane, and aren't trying to drive through the middle of the village. But for those, for your neighbors down that way, it's going to be different, it's going to be activity, and they have to be followed, you know, they can't work the 4:07, you know, and I've been working on weekends, unless we get really stuck, we need to change that. But folks down at that end of the village needs to be aware that action's happening in your part of the village, so.
I don't know what you guys are dumping on, is that, are they dumping felt out together?
No, so the felt is a carrier for the epoxy, and they work in tandem to create a structural entity. The felt becomes basically a plastic clip. Think of it as a bone, and then you put the epoxy in, the thing gets cured, and it's a solid piece of bone.
Okay, that would increase the catch of that.
No, we made that with a very smooth product, it's kind of, the way the felt goes in, they load it up, and push it into the edges, and it fills all the voids and tracks, it's a very structural product that it's geared for, it basically replaces the old pipe. The old pipe sits around it, it gives protection, it's about maintenance.
Okay, so that works even though it's, let's say, it's a gas fire, it has a brand here.
Where you run into trouble is if you have the pipe has an offset joint, or it's completely collapsed. If it's collapsed, sometimes they can go in with a robot, this isn't, it's actually a robot.
Would it be possible to, to see a sample of the pipeline, like, next time we have one of those?
So each, each contractor's going to have their own type of product, but they're launching it with the same, I believe, I have a block. It was cut out of the greenfield system at the end, so it's like, I was trying to see a wooden thing. Vanessa, do you want to make a move on that?
Oh, so, so the contractors, so how locked in are they, on the price? And they say, oh, this is, you know, serials, but, oh, oh, oh.
Nope, I can't go off on that. We, New York State law allows us to negotiate with a contractor if there's a major change in the cost, so say we were putting in power lines, those copper, it's very expensive to bid, but then copper, if you, less than, there is case law, it allows a, this one to negotiate with the parent company, so we can do that. But when it comes to the costs that appear, there are reasons why the contract may go off, that would be a change order, so if they were something, so if we found a man from the bottom of the, and that requires part of the law, that would be a change expense, so, things of that nature can adjust the cost of the project. But for each contract, we include the additional services on it, so that allows the owner of the project, which is already the village, to deal with those requirements where we have, we do. We, we build in the project a certain amount of contingency and just outside of the contracts, which allows us to also affect the project's, so in half projects, we, oh, well, we've got this particular treatment that needs to go, that was anticipated, we're going to report. The staging of when a generator came is different from when it was, so we can't drive that generator to the spot on the side, we bring the community to that, but we have contingency built in each contract, as well as the project, to address this situation. Nothing's guaranteed, but I believe these are...
During the time of when they're putting the new liner through the pipes, are we going to be restricted, like, hey, we're doing your area, we appreciate no using any of your apps?
So, yeah, I'm sorry, any more questions? That's it. Okay, so it depends on the area. So it depends on how the, the land is sloped, and what's not, how much you're using. So if you're a typical single-family home, and there's a good amount of slope from the coast down to the sewer, you may be able to flush a couple of times in combination. A contractor, when we go to do that lining, will leak out, we'll, we'll be posting on our website, we're posting on the village, there's a lot of communication that's going down, about me to know about, and so, there is a point where it's like, we can't, like, take a shower, but you can flush, and so there is a certain amount of chemical.
We've got five people, so that's why I'm asking.
Nope, it's... And typically, that work is done on a weekday, so, you know, some people are out of work, they're at school, things of that nature. And the lining is actually often better to do it in the back, so we've had some pretty mild winters on the plate, because one of them drive to the spot, the ground is hard, very unlikely, that's a great time to get to it. So yes, you may be able to flush, but...
Vanessa, what proportion of our collection system is that, like, one other? How much do I have to try and comment on this?
Oh, actually, in that picture, I tried to start color coding sections that it shows. So if you go, like, up off of Hudson Road, in the developments that we built later, they come on PVC, it's almost entirely PVC, and then the rest of it, like Broadway, North Montgomery, all of that, through the woods, all in small sections, so it's like spot repairs or like smaller lines that are other concrete that they do. Yeah.
With the play, the play hold up, we need to read at the end of the play, to sweep in more water, if you do put that in, it's play quite, it's not like, it's a bad play, to say, what's going on in here for you.
Yeah, no, no, the curtain place lining has its own structural integrity, and it doesn't need, like, the pipe completely comparring around it, so that's, that's our best idea.
The, the, the pipe that is put in is epoxy liner, it's actually a truck, and you could form that pipe, put it on the road, and then drive over with a truck. That's too basic, but you can still do it. So it's got a lot of integrity, so you go, you put a plate, the natural bulk actually coats the pressure. The old pipe doesn't act, just replaces it, it's a new pipe. We also, just a fun fact, sometimes you put in the new pipe, or the old pipe is in good shape, doesn't have ladders, these are where the service lines come in, the interchange between the ladder and service connection and put a plate, it may have defects, and so you can just, if you have water coming in around the edges, there's a robot that can go in, and it can shoot a liner into the five feet of the service line, and then marry that up with a plate, it's a, and you end up with a good product, you have a significant correction in that issue.
Sorry, go. I want to face up here, I'm sort of curious.
It's all in one...
Yeah, depends on the product, and so it's like a couple hours to, like, what you do, but it's not...
Nope, there's a lot of notice, there's signs, there's door hunkers, it's, it's very, it's a lot, but within a day, it's all fine, as opposed to a bit of replacing.
So? Quick question, we talked about it before, that weight limit on that bridge, coming in, that's only five ton, I believe.
The five ton, okay, then?
Yeah. So how are we going to get these heavy-duty trucks coming over a bridge at different places?
That's a DPW bridge, and we have met with the director of the Duchess County Department of Works, and they have confirmed that the vehicles will really bring me somebody over that bridge, or, you still...
Yeah, that's right, and we also, so we publish these bid documents, so the contractors should bid on, then we publish a debt, say an addendum, and then we did another addendum, we did like, I think, five addenda to the bid documents, and in one of those addenda, we included a requirement that the contractor should verify with Duchess County DPW about overweight, you know, standard vehicles are okay, but any overweight vehicles, they've got to do some calculations to make sure that they're within, uh, the weight limit of the bridge. The bridge, yeah, so, yeah, so we've had that in presence.
Do you have any requirement, just in that way, and go out that way? If it's a thick, and it go up on Montgomery Street, they go out the other way? We've already had four water main breaks on that little section of the road there, and we're...
Yeah, that's, that's a... We're very focused on having all if possible, or at least as many as possible, strictly in and out of the south end of the building. We're awfully tight down there on our main road, so.
That's the road, so.
All right, so maybe we can all hang around a little bit, look at the pictures, these folks will be around for other questions. I'd like to thank the water authority.